Six o'clock and welcome to the Wednesday, January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five City Council meeting, Nevada City, City Council.
Squeak wheels.
Councilmember Fernandez, if you would, the land acknowledges.
I will, for the third time in a row. We acknowledge that the Nisanon people are still here among us today, though nearly invisible. We understand that we are on Nisanon land that was never ceded, and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near genocide of their people. As a resident or visitor in Nisanon land, we support the Nevada City Ranchery and Nisanon Tribe in efforts to stabilize their people, as well as their campaign to restore federal recognition.
Thank you.
Always happy.
And I'll move it along to somebody else next time. You're just very handy right there. Doug, if you would lead this.
I would love to.
Right there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Welcome to Nancy Aschian.
Aschian.
Aschian, who's subbing for Dean tonight. We're always happy to see Nancy. She's so much better behaved than Dean. So thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cece.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Peterson.
Here.
All members present.
All right. Adoption of the agenda. Council now is the, is the time to, for any agenda modifications, make any additional changes to the agenda, pull consent items, or do we have any recusals to announce? All right. I will be looking for a motion and a second to adopt the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
I second.
Motion by Councilmember Fernandez and a second by Vice Mayor Klein. Those in, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next up, no presentations tonight. Public comment. Government Code Section five nine four five four point three provides that any member of the public may address the City Council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction to the city. So, right here at front, step up to the microphone, public comment.
Brian?
We have, were you interested in public comment?
Yeah, oh, we see go in or shut.
He's staff. You don't, yeah, that's okay.
My name is Remington Cox, and I'm going to pump you up. As you work with construction companies and come up with designs and quotes for the new skate park, I urge you to incorporate a pump track component and to explore how this addition can easily fall within the available budget and ultimately improve the main features of the park. Mr. Fleming, you've spoken about your vision of having a pump track in Nevada City. This is our moment to make this incredible dream come true. So often, the perimeter of a skate park is just flat concrete and ultimately a waste of space and resources. Why not increase access by turning negative space into engaging space? Incorporating a pump track around the periphery of the skate park gives emerging skaters a safe place to practice, providing our youngest and our oldest community members with an opportunity to develop their skills. This will decongest the rest of the park so advanced skaters can go harder on challenging features without excessive cross traffic. A pump track increases engagement and creates a safer experience for all. It also lowers the barrier for entry. A park with gradually intensifying future, features fosters an environment where the athletes of tomorrow can grow and develop. A goal of this park is to keep kids sober and give them an alternative, more productive outlet. This is an admirable goal, but it cannot be achieved unless you intentionally mold a space within the skate park where young novice skaters feel like they belong. I remember being a kid alone and scared of the skate park, not knowing where to go or how to progress without getting in people's way. We need a space that gives direction to our young inexperienced skaters and gives them a sense of belonging and a clear path to develop their skills so they can flourish. The Union quoted me in an article talking about how a pump track feature would make an intergenerational park, one that is inclusive for all ages and abilities, one where everyone can be active. A pump track encourages lifelong habits of physical fitness, from my new nephew learning how to maintain momentum, to our stylish veteran skaters who simply want to flow and exercise without thrashing. But let's talk money. A pump track expands our tourism potential. Many cities around the country are opting to include pump track designs into new skate park construction. A hybrid skate park would be a beacon for people to visit our city and patronize local businesses. A skate park with a pump track is the answer to maximize the variety of experiences for our citizens and our visitors. Roller skates, bikes, and scooters can all have fun pumping. I implore you to speak with designers about the cost effective route of integrating a pump track into the new skate park. Thank you.
Thank you for your enthusiastic presentation.
My info?
Yeah, I just need to get your contact information so we can continue this after this meeting. That was a great presentation. Thank you so much. I believe in pump tracks.
Mr. Fleming, I believe in you and I believe in the City Council. Thank you. Should I email you? Should I write it to?
Please sit in the back of the room there.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you all so much for your time. I know your time is valuable. I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
That was probably the best public comment we've had in a while.
Okay. Other public comment?
You don't want to follow that.
No other public comment. All right. Thank you. We will close public comment, and we will move to the consent agenda. So, wow, I'm exhausted. I'm now looking, so moving to, okay, any public comment? We're going to open the consent agenda for public comment. See, none? Any questions or comments from the council on the consent agenda? If not, I am looking for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Move by Vice Mayor Klein, seconded by Councilmember Cece. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cece.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yep.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Nice. Thank you. We will now move to our business agenda. And first up for us is consideration of an increase in authorization from fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand for the Business Development Fee Waiver Program for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And I'd like to welcome Brittany for her first ever presentation in front of the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Before you tonight, I am bringing an item requesting that we increase the budget for the current business fee waiver program that was approved on June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four, to be increased from fifty thousand dollars to seventy-five thousand dollars. This program is modeled after our twenty-three, twenty-four fee waiver program and has been a great success. We started it on July first, and it's been utilized by four hundred and nineteen applicants in the following capacities. We have three hundred and ninety-seven business license renewals or new licenses, thirty-six hosted short term rental renewals, three non-residential architectural reviews, and two signed reviews. Because we've had such great success, staff is recommending that the City Council increase the maximum authorization for the program from fifty to seventy-five thousand, which will be reconciled at mid-year to accommodate the ongoing demand for the program.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment?
I got a little quick question.
Sure.
Um, how many, so have we spent all the money in the budget? Where are we with the?
Yes.
We spent it all, so this is a complete reallocation, and this time we're going for more because it was so successful, we don't want to turn any away.
Correct.
Did we have people we turned away last time?
We did not. We actually went a little over budget because we didn't want to turn people away.
Nice. Okay, so that makes sense. Thank you. That's all I needed.
All right, open for public comment. Seeing none, I'll come back to the council, looking for a motion and a second.
I move that we approve the increased authorization to be reconciled in the mid-year budget action.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Fernandez, seconded by Councilmember Fleming. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cece.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Brittany.
Good job. Thank you.
Well done. All right. Next up, we have consideration of the special event street closure request for the Nevada City Chamber of Commerce events through February two thousand and twenty-six. It will be introduced by Lon Peterson and then taken up by Lynn and perhaps Stuart, who's wandering around back there.
W Y O chair.
All right, so good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Lon Peterson is just the City Manager. I have the pleasure of introducing for consideration the special event street closure for two thousand and twenty-six through the Chamber of Commerce. And with that, as you guys know, we partner with the Chamber very closely on events throughout the year. This year, we're going to have sixteen individual events, some that are repeated, as you know. And with that, we have Stuart and Lynn from the Chamber here to talk about those and kick that off. So with that said, Lynn or?
Yeah, I'm going to let Stuart speak momentarily on another topic.
Right, within the.
Passing the mic just for the folks at home as you speak.
Sure. Does this work?
That's fine.
There we go. Okay. I would like to cordially invite all of you to attend. So for years, one of the key things the Chambers really wanted to do was take all our amazing history and try and put it in a way that young folks could access it. And we all know where everyone accessed their information now, and that's through their smartphone. So we've created a smartphone-enabled walking tour of the downtown. And what's really wonderful about this, I mean, it's a really cool bit of technology. You can see photos, you can do a slider and see what this scene looked like a hundred and fifty years ago and what it looks like today to know exactly where you are. There's some fun facts in there. But what's so exciting is there are so many people in our community that were involved in this. I mean, we have narrators, Tom Nye and Wendy Ermshire, who, they were the main narrators, and we also had Paul Madsen. We had students from Sale involved, and we had the Historical Society, we had the Surles Historical Library, and everyone put a lot of their heart and soul into really giving a pretty complete. The tour takes about an hour. It's accessible via a Q R code, and it will be launched on the sixth of February, which is a Thursday, at five o'clock, and it'll start at Robinson Plaza. We're going to do a couple stops on the tour, and we're going to play a little, I won't say a game, but a little thing, and I'll leave that as a surprise. But we'll end up at the National where we'll have hors d'oeuvres and other nice, and a no-host bar. So it's an opportunity for all of you. It's really a moment for some civic pride, because I think this will just, it's a great way to connect our past with the present and the future and go from there. And, thank you, Lon, that's good, is it's in multiple languages. Right now, we have it in English and in Spanish, everything written and spoken in Spanish. So you can just, when you, when you download the app or when you do the Q R code, it'll ask what language you want. And we're in the process of adding in Brazilian Portuguese, because that's something that we have a lot of Brazilians visiting, and Dutch, just because I have some connections there and we can do the thing in Dutch. But we're also looking for French and for German. And if anyone has any other particular languages that they'd like to see happen, we can see about working it in, so.
That makes sense.
He did say.
Yeah, that's the first one.
What's that?
I'm sorry.
Spanish is there. So Spanish is already in here.
I was going to say.
So, yes, exactly, because that is clearly our number one. And then every, everything else is a bit of it just in second, so it's just whoever we have connections that's willing to spend the time on, on translation, you know, because Google Translate only gets you so far. So, anyway, I won't show any of this yet, but I'll answer any questions, but that'll be for the launch party. But I would love to see as many of you council members as, as are able to come. Lou, you have a question?
Considering our history, I think we should add Chinese in Nisanon.
Yeah? Okay. That's, I'll talk to Jeannie Wood, and I, it'd be interesting to see, yeah, the, the Nisanon part might be a little more difficult, because, well, we can go into that later, but just in terms of the, the support that we get from the backend of the app, but I'll look into that.
Can you say more about that?
Well, so.
I don't know what that means.
So, and one of the people that we want to thank too is Nevada County Media, who was great. They, they provided us with the, the facility, but they also, if we are able to get them a script, they have someone who can do the narration through kind of A I that just takes the scripts and makes it really like sounds incredibly convincing. And the thing is, they kind of do the major languages, and Nisanon is not on the top ten list of things that they could, so.
Was that the, were you referring to the language as opposed to the Nisanon stories being told by Nisanon voices?
Well, I think Nisanon stories should be told by Nisanon voices, but I do think that having this available as is in Nisanon would be a reflection.
I think, so my understanding is that it's a language that is actively being recovered, that has been lost, and there are just portions of it. So I don't, unfortunately, I don't know that we have access to that. I wish we did. But Lou does bring up a good point. I was, you know, I heard you worked with the Historical Society, and those are great names that you listed. I imagine it will grow and expand.
And, and I didn't, there, there's so many groups that we worked with, and we worked with Ember and Shelley, and, and they provided us with visuals, and they approved the scripts, and everything is, so, absolutely. Every member of the community that's, that's, this is directed to or is a part of has been consulted.
Awesome. That sounds awesome. I appreciate the multilingual, the fact that it's available in Spanish, which our White House website is not even available in Spanish at the moment. That's, that's, that's a good job.
Yeah. So anyway, look forward to showing it to you directly on the sixth of February.
Well, thank you, Stuart. I just want to comment, I'm speaking to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow, and I'm talking a lot about what it means to live at the nexus of progress and preservation as a perfect example. Exactly what we're talking about, how we share our history in modern ways.
Yes, exactly.
So thank you for that.
Sure. So without further ado, turn it over to the dean.
Microphone.
For all the other wonderful events.
Microphone. There we go.
Thanks, Stuart, and good evening, council members. Thanks for having me tonight. So here to give a general overview of what we have planned for two thousand and twenty-five in hopes that you'll approve the events that we've submitted. It looks very similar to years past, so you won't see too many differences. So I'll kind of just walk through what we've included and highlight any key differences. The first thing you'll see is there is a list of all of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six events that we've included, which includes three events that are non-Chamber events that we just help partner and submit their applications and work with them on. And then we do have our flag calendar for the year as well, so again, pretty similar to years past with all of the various cultural flags and event flags, along with the U S flags and the dates that we have for those. Again, pretty straightforward, same thing you've seen in the past. Then jumping into the first event, we have our Town Beautification Day, which is an annual event we partner with the city on to help beautify the town. That'll be April twenty-fifth, from eight-thirty A M till noon. Earth Fest will be happening for the fourth time this year, so looking forward to seeing that continue to grow. That'll be April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, a little earlier this year just because Easter falls on Earth Day this year, so it's a week ahead of when it normally would have been. But otherwise, looking like a pretty similar event to years past. We did add council chambers, which we have some ideas for how we'll be able to utilize the council chambers, either in partnering with a new environmental organization in town or potentially having a repair cafe where people could come mend and repair items. So, looking forward to that. And then that brings us to the Spring Sidewalk Sale. So this is the one new event. We've done the sidewalk sale for many years, but we're adding a spring version, so we typically do fall, and so now we have a spring and fall one. So that will be on Saturday, May tenth, which is the same day as our Long Table Awards, which will be that evening. So it'll be a busy day in town, but works out well for us. So the Long Table Awards Dinner will be the evening of May tenth this year. Again, that's one we, we hope to see you all at. We hope to see you at all of the events, though. The Pride Flag Raising, so this is a non-Chamber event, but the city does help co-sponsor it along with Nevada County Pride. That'll be June first at one P M this year. First Friday Art Walks, again, very similar, three events, so it's typically the first Friday of June, July, and August, which holds true for June and August, but July, the first Friday in July is Fourth of July, so it'll be the second week this year. That. And then Hot Summer Nights, same as always the last three Wednesdays in July, same footprint there.
Now officially Hot Summer Nights.
Officially, as of last year, Hot Summer Nights, not just summer nights anymore. And then our Fall Sidewalk Sale will be September sixth, so same weekend as this past year, which was a very successful weekend for most of our businesses downtown. They did a, a good job this year. And then Constitution Day, so we have a whole weekend of festivities. So it starts with the concert, which will be on the twentieth, and then running all day that day, there's the Living History reenactments at Pioneer Park, and then on the Sunday, there will be the parade. So again, similar to years past, but we are actually looking to add more of a cultural component to it this year, to the parade specifically. We're hoping to bring in more cultures and add that piece of it. And then that brings us to Halloween, which is a Friday this year, so we anticipate big crowds. We actually, thanks to Placer, we were able to see, and we had about twenty-five-hundred people attend that last year. So the small change there is just expanding the street closures just slightly, especially being on a Friday. We want to make sure it's safe for the kids in town, that still Broad Street will be open, but adding North Pine to it and just adding a little more space for people to roam around and without cars. And then that brings us to Victorian Christmas, which this past year was a record-breaking year. So we, at least back to, we have data back to two thousand and eighteen, and so we were just under seventy thousand people total over the five days. The last Sunday in particular was just under twenty thousand people on that day. So a lot of people. It was a really great success for our businesses. Many of our businesses reported having their best day in history.
Wow.
So it was really great. We've heard that from at least half a dozen businesses that they had their best days.
I've heard that also from several.
Yeah, so it was really successful for them and for our vendors, most of which are local artisan vendors. But with that, obviously, fitting twenty thousand people into our town of three thousand is a challenge. So we've been working with city staff, and we are looking to expand the footprint just slightly this year, hoping to include Union Alley so that we can spread people out. We're not really looking to add more vendors, but really just to spread out the number of folks that are here in town during that time and make it a little safer and a little bit more enjoyable by doing that. So, that's that. And then that brings us to the menorah lighting, which will be happening during Victorian Christmas this year, actually. So Hanukkah falls, first and last day are both Victorian Christmas days, and so they're planning a small event in the plaza and then a larger event indoors. And so this includes just the outdoor component of it, so we'll be working with them closely on that because it's obviously a bit crowded, but we'll make it work on, on that day.
Can you remind us what day that is, please?
Yes, I skipped over that one. It's the seventeenth of, yeah, of December.
And it actually ends before Victorian Christmas actually starts, so it's during setup. So it'll be a little bit chaotic, but it won't impact like two groups of visitors kind of at the same time, at least.
Yeah. And then moving into two thousand and twenty-six Mardi Gras, we have February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-six for that one, so that's the date we're looking at there. Moving it back to a Sunday, this year it does fall on a Saturday, we're moving it back to a Sunday schedule for two thousand and twenty-six. And then another non-Chamber event is the Chinese Lunar New Year Parade, and that's planned for March first of two thousand and twenty-six. So that is all of the events. Do you have any questions for me about that?
Sure. Hi, Lynn.
Hi.
You said twenty-five-hundred for Halloween this last year?
Yeah.
And that's based on Placer A I, which is, comes from phone information. And I'd say a lot of the human beings probably don't even have phones because they're tiny little children, so I would guess that that number would be even higher.
It could be. So Placer has an algorithm that they use based on knowing that not everyone has a, a phone, and so there's actually some fancy math that happens, although that event definitely brings in more kids than usual, so it likely could be higher. It also only includes the downtown core footprint and does not include the residential, so I think there's actually quite a bit more people happening in the, coming to the residential area later in the evening, and so.
Are there bathrooms set up for that number of folks?
So, that's a good question. We haven't had bathrooms in the past. I think probably this year we would add some in because it, it is a lot of, a lot of folks. And, yeah. And in the past, we, the only street closure we had was just between the, the bollards on Commercial Street, so we are expanding it a bit this year, so I think it makes sense to add some restrooms with that.
I thought, yeah, the, the number expected to attend the menorah lighting in the packet was, I think it said twenty, which is really low.
That's their thinking. I, I, sorry, I talked with a rabbi. They're going to have their big event at the Miners Foundry indoors, because they really liked how that worked this year, and they want to just have a small contingent of folks for the menorah lighting, so it's not like the main show, it's just kind of a little side thing that's a little more intimate. Because, yeah, we were really pushing back on them for just the, like, if you're, they're not going to be able to park. They said, no, we're definitely fewer than twenty people. So that's their thinking.
Interesting. One more, one more thought I had was, how, this last Victorian Christmas wildly successful, well done to all of you. How many vendors did you turn down because you were full up? What was the number of people that you had to say no to?
I turned away over forty vendors, so we had a hundred and twenty vendors here, and I turned away over forty, which is by far the most since I've been here. Typically, I turn away five to ten.
Wow.
I had the notion, and we really lucked out weather-wise.
We really did.
Cornish Christmas got rained on, we had clear skies, and it was kind of awesome for us.
Right between storms.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, you know, we can't count on that.
True.
But having the thought of, you know, the last menorah lighting was moved to the Miners Foundry and was a great success, from what I understand.
There are people in that.
Wouldn't it be interesting to, instead of turning vendors down, to say, we have room for you in the Miners Foundry with signage that says more, more vendors down here and bring more people in?
Yeah, that's something we're always.
I won't, I won't rest until we have one billion people in the downtown area.
Oh, period.
Yeah.
The only consideration is there's reasons why some people were turned away, because we have standards around. The materials that people like, it has to be handmade, and it has to fit the theme, you know, so.
What I would say to that, so in the past, typically the ones I was turning away didn't fit. This year, there were a lot I turned away that would have been a good fit.
Yeah.
And, but there is that balance, too, of wanting to make sure people are going into our brick and mortar shops, and so we want to make sure our, our businesses that are here three hundred and sixty-five days a year are really, you know, benefiting from it as well, and it's not being too diluted by having too many vendors.
Yeah.
But we do encourage other businesses, like Communal has often or hosted vendors. Miners Foundry often has their craft fair. This year, it won't be on a Victorian Christmas day, but in the past, they've had their craft fair with vendors. Sometimes they have the Nutcracker going on, so they usually have other events and activities going on. So we try to utilize the other spaces in town as much as possible, including the Nevada Theater. This year, we did a screening in partnership with Onyx of the Christmas card, and so we do try to utilize all the spaces around town that we can.
If I may, I'm going to counter that a little bit. I don't think more, 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 and I, I don't, I don't think that's necessarily what you're saying, but a lot of what I heard, I heard a few things. I heard from businesses, they were thrilled to have this opportunity during the holiday season to make money in an economy that doesn't always allow that for them right now. And I have safety concerns, and I've heard a lot of locals really concerned with how much people are actually coming in, and I think that because of safety concerns, because of parking and a lot of different reasons, so I think it's like important to balance all those things, not just necessarily take in more vendors. I trust your process on, on vetting the vendors, but I am really curious. I don't go to Victorian Christmas every night. I try to do an evening and a daytime one. It's, it's a lot, and I'm excited for the vendors, I'm excited for the shops. Locals are a little bummed that it's, that so many people are coming into town. One of my concerns is, I've driven around town at times it's going on, and I am a person who is aware of what's going on, and I'm driving with caution, and I've got my brights on, and I've almost hit people several times. I am so concerned, and I know there's issues with like Caltrans and where people park and jurisdictions and all of that stuff, but like, when I'm going in, you know, down the on-ramp or off, the off-ramp, and people are parking in the space, in the shoulder, I just get terrified for people. And we know that we had an unfortunate year a few years ago. So I'm just curious about, and I know you guys have a year to, to, to look at that, and what are your thoughts? Where are you guys with that and, and parking? And how can we just strive to do a little better each year with the influx of visitors?
Yeah, so it's definitely a challenge with parking, and that's something the county graciously lets us use their lot for our shuttle, which our shuttle, again, saw record attendance. So I think that's one thing, is pushing that as much as possible, because it gets less people driving through the narrow streets and more to just a safe parking lot where they can then come down here and be dropped off right at the event. The parking lot for our shuttle filled up this year, where there was no parking left. So then it's, you know, that's a challenge for us. We've been talking with the county. Unfortunately, they don't run their bus service on Sundays right now, which we're hoping will change, but we have started offering a secondary shuttle on Wednesdays only in partnership with the county from Grass Valley. So looking at things like that and trying to promote that towards locals and not advertise it so much to the out-of-town folks, because it's a great spot you could hop on from the main Tinloy stop and head right downtown. But unfortunately, it's Wednesdays only right now, and so we are hoping to expand that and, and looking into more shuttle options if we need to add a secondary lot for our shuttle somewhere else in Grass Valley or somewhere else with a large parking lot. We've also spoken with the chief about having a broader safety meeting, just to make sure, because there are so many people, I think it is important for us to make sure we're keeping an eye on that. We're looking at adding a safety tent and having EMTs onsite, things like that. So there's a lot we've been discussing about what we can do to make sure that we keep it a safe event, and, yeah.
Awesome. And just for clarity, the parking that happens in spaces that aren't really parking spaces, like, like, is that just okay because it's an event and so many people are here? I'm just trying to understand. I mean, there's not tickets on cars, there's not, is there?
Yeah.
On 49?
Well, so that's not.
On ramps and off ramps?
So, well, I would say if it is on the on-ramp, off-ramp, it, it goes to CHP, but the PD, they give out a lot of tickets.
No, no, you guys are talking about in those spaces.
Please, hold on, city manager's got something.
I was just going to say, let's not have a dialogue back and forth between people here, because people won't be able to hear it at home or, or be recorded, but sorry to interrupt, Councilmember.
Yeah, for sure.
And we do loop in CHP, so we do have safety meetings that we do have here at City Hall beforehand with Public Works, PD and CHP comes in as well, and so it, CHP is always not always great about coming out and enforcing that, and like PD's always onsite and is really helping with that, but.
Thank you. And I wasn't getting it that PD wasn't doing their job. I was thinking about those 49 spaces and the, you know, the spaces on 49, and I was thinking more of that, not necessarily.
I can touch on it if you want. Yeah, we, so there's a lot of question on that for the tickets or do we tow? It is not okay. We do cite all those. We do actually, not so much during, because we're, we're very busy during, but prior to, we definitely walk where all those spaces are taken. We drive through. Anybody that is illegally parked, we give them a citation. There is sometimes questions about towing. By law, we do not tow even in a red zone unless it's blocking traffic or, or an immediate hazard for the condition. So they're just going to get the ticket for parking in emergency zone. We do everything on the 49, we can write tickets, and we do write a lot of the tickets there, and then we also pass it along to CHP, like, hey, if you deem this to be a traffic hazard, do you want to tow? I don't want to speak for them on their behalf, but we do communicate with them regularly, so.
Great, I take that back. I apologize.
It's okay, because there's a lot of cars.
I know, I'm always looking, and I feel.
So I guarantee we miss some, but we try to cite quite a few of them that are parked illegally.
And we do, I'm sorry, we do a debrief of Victorian Christmas that just happened last, was it last week? And so with all of our staff and, and the chamber and the, everything that you have already hit on, parking, lighting, trash, and bathrooms were amongst the biggest items, so we'll have a significant change with the way we do trash collections, where the dumpsters and roll-offs will be that are accessible to both the chamber staff and our public work staff. Weight issues with waste management not picking up this year, we think we'll have overcome those by placing them there in places where it won't be such a challenge. Bigger receptacles, lighting, they've talked about, and they'll be exploring some options there. The city is exploring options for bathrooms, not only because I think they just look ugly to have those gray plastic bathrooms out there, but also opportunities to have something that, you know, the purpose built, sit on an actual toilet and use an actual sink as opposed to a porta potty is something we're exploring with the chamber to address. All of those things we'll bring back to you before this coming Victorian Christmas, if we're going to be able to implement them, along with, I think we have tree lighting in Kalanin Park and Garland on Commercial Street, along the Tarozolights. So there's a number of things that will come back to you that, to address these things, because even though it is a year away, it comes up quick, so. But if you have more direction or thoughts on those, give them to us, because we'll put them into the planning process for this.
And I just want to say, I know that you guys are on top of this. This is more of just having the conversation and getting all the information out there transparently, transparently for the people who have, you know, brought up concerns. So I appreciate all the work you guys do. This looks like a beautiful calendar, and I'm excited for the year.
So just one last thing about Victorian Christmas, just knowing to, we never know until the event is happening how popular that particular day is going to be, you know, because of the forecast for weather. I mean, the last day, it was supposed to start raining at 6 o'clock, and that caused 20,000 people to show up, you know? And I, and the last, most important point, and I, I hope everyone can share this with folks, but the degree in which merchants in the downtown depend on Victorian Christmas to survive the year, I mean, we field a lot of calls from people that are just like, man, you know, it's just, I, I don't really, you know, it's like, the thing is, if you like the downtown and you like the fact that you want to go to the places you go to, some of them won't be there if there was no Victorian Christmas. So it's just, I can't emphasize, we can't emphasize enough how important this day is. And if you're like, well, it's just so crowded and I don't like it, you know? It, it's, it's, I mean, we hear this a lot from people.
So do we.
We get it, yes, we get it. And Wednesday nights were created many, many years ago as Locals Night. And so that was the solution for busy Sundays, and so if you want the intimacy.
It feels like it still is.
Yeah, exactly. And so just recommend, folks, just come on Wednesday. It's much more chill, it's less, there's no tour buses, it's, you know, it's great, and you'll also be supporting businesses that depend on those nights for their whole year, so.
I'll add, too, just a couple notes, because that's something, like Stuart said, we've heard a lot of. So we are looking at ways to engage locals more, like having a discount at the bar or on the shuttle and things like that for our locals, so that way we definitely make them know, like, we, we rely on the locals, that's important. And now because of Placer, we can actually see how many locals are coming, and we see a decrease. So in 2018, 43% of our Victorian Christmas attendees were from Western Nevada County, and the last year, only 35% of our attendees were.
But that's a lot, that's all relative with the, the overall number.
It's all relative with the numbers, yes, it is. And so, but it is a decrease, and so it's something we definitely want to address, because we want to make sure it's still something for locals. And like Stuart said, Wednesdays, we see half of the attendance on Wednesdays as we do Sunday, so it's really the day we want to push for our local folks to come out.
And I had my most fun Victorian Christmas ever on the Sunday this year, so thank you. My family was here, it was really sweet.
So a couple of things. What's the limit? I mean, what is the limit? What is, I, I came, I came every, every one. I came all five. I thought I was supposed to do that as a mayor, I didn't realize I did have to.
It's a choice.
It's a choice. I didn't have any fun the first Sunday I was here, because I couldn't move. And the other thing is all the damn dogs. Why are people bringing dogs? And, and I'm sorry.
You Grinch.
No, I'm not a Grinch. When everybody has to walk around.
You could have heard about that.
Two parents letting their dogs introduce each other by doing what dogs do to meet each other.
How dare dogs do that?
And everybody trying to get around them, it's, you know? I have been to events where dogs were prohibited, but I'm not going to go there, I'm not that much of a Grinch. But, but you see that, it was difficult, it was difficult. And it made me wonder, you know, what, what is the maximum limit here? Not that we could ever stop it or control that.
What is the dog limit?
We, we think that this year was the limit.
I agree.
And that's why the expansion to Union Street, but without adding a whole bunch more vendors.
That's what you have to do.
It spreads those people out, so it's not so congested.
Spread to seven helps.
But the other thing I wanted to comment was, I met with Stuart after your first Victorian Christmas, because there was, I had a lot of concerns. I, I'm sorry, I've run a lot of big events, you know? I ran the world's fifth-largest civilian airshow for, for, for many years, you know? I, I understand big events. And, and I was really concerned about the safety, and I was really concerned about access. You know, my scenario is, what if somebody goes down at Pine and Broad? How do you get to them? You know, how does that work? And, and I thought a lot about that, and, and, you know, over the time we worked with the police and everything else, and we've repositioned police officers from just the entrance, they spread out when they walk, and, and you could see the emergency vehicles are in much better position. So I know, I know the concern is there, I know you've worked at it, I've seen an enormous amount of improvements. I just want to acknowledge, I know you're working on trash, and I think it's really hard when you have a clear day, and the next day you're going to clean up the trash and then it pours rain. And then rain when it gets trash wet, on and on and on. But we have had complaints, I'm sure you know, from, from those who are really concerned about the lack of trash pickup. I have spoken to the city manager, our folks are great, your folks are great, we'll figure it out, and I know that, so I just wanted to make those comments.
And Lynn, can you share what options you might be exploring for additional trash pickup crews?
Yeah, so we are, we are very excited. I will say, we did add additional trash pickup on our staff this year at the end of the night. Our cleanup crew has done more, but we have the lovely team of volunteers who come around twice a week in Nevada City and clean up, and we are talking with them about helping do the trash pickup the next morning after the events. And so we're very excited to work with them on it, and.
Seen that name, passing on that topic.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're very excited for that. I think it'll make a big difference. Mardi Gras will be the first time we're hopefully rolling that out, so look for that, because Mardi Gras is definitely one of our, our dirtiest events. There's lots of beads and feathers all over the place.
Well, you know what? That has been around, that event is so much healthier than it used to be. They make people wear clothes. Well, and even then, with the clampers and the naked women and all that stuff. All right, so, we good here?
I, I would definitely say, though, as, you know, people have concerns, and there was some public comment on this item, we want to hear that. The chambers, as you already noted, you know, Stuart and Lynn and, and their volunteers are amazing, and our staff is, our public works crews are amazing at turning this around from, you know, Sunday craziness to Monday morning looking wonderful, but we can always do better when people, you know, have concerns. Definitely share them with us or with the chamber or both of us, because we do want to make this better every year and not make it to, we're at a tipping point where we have too many people, and it's not good for our businesses, not good for our residents. So, and I think we're getting close to, to that, so.
All right, can I open this up for?
One other thing I'll just add, last year, we added an additional half an hour set-up time for all of our street fairs, and that, I just want to say, has been amazing. Our vendors love it, but also we love it, because we tow about a tenth of the amount of cars that we used to, so it's been really nice, a lot less people getting tickets and toes, and so, so you'll see that again in the applications that we've added, that additional half an hour, and it's made a big difference for streamlining our set-up process.
Thank you. I'm going to open this up to public comment.
Hi, guys, Scott Whiteland. I also agreed that the event was incredible, and I'm also new to the neighborhood. I only have one life safety question. If the parking lot filled up up at the government center, should we shuttle from Brunswick or from the County Fair Center or something else? Maybe that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you for your comment. We can, we can look, I know you've looked.
Yeah, so we're, we're continuing to look into options for the shuttle, so we don't know for sure what it will be this year, but we are definitely looking into how do we expand shuttle access this year.
I imagine, too, as the chamber rolls out, the, the public parking access on these, these little handy tools, that information will also be available during that time, so that's.
And we're going to work with the, the same software that runs the history tours can do parking as well, so that people can access that to, you know, find where the parking lots are and have some information about it. So Lon and Stuart are going to make their magic happen on that.
Yeah, and one other option is NU that we've talked about off and on, that would be kind of an easy in-between Grass Valley and Nevada City. So that's a potential, too, although what's wonderful, and thank you, County of Nevada, but that is free of charge to use that lot, and so, you know, most other options would be like, you know, paid options.
But if you're having 70,000 people. So, all right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the event's street closure request for the Nevada City Chamber of Commerce events.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Vice Mayor Klein and seconded by Councilmember Fernandez. Roll call, please.
Councilmember CC?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yep.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, item A, Consideration of Resolution Number 2025-03, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Nevada City, California, adopting the City of Nevada City AB 548 housing policy related to the inspections of multifamily units. Chief, you're on, take it away.
Mayor, thank you, members of council, okay. Today, so what we're talking about is an adoption to code enforcement policy as directed under SB, sorry, AB 548, which directs for the protection of tenants in multi-unit complexes. So much of this we do already, this is kind of a loophole that we're just closing through this Assembly Bill that protects all the residents of a multi-unit complex. Basically, what this does is if we do get currently a complaint from a tenant in a building, and it could affect the neighboring tenants for the same building in the multi-unit complex, then we would follow up with those tenants, hopefully, but this directs it by law and under our new policy that now we have to by law contact all the other tenants in that complex that are connected immediately to that apartment. So what I mean by that is all, if they share a wall or a floor or ceiling, we're gonna contact them. Some examples of this might be, obviously mold is the big one, that's a simple one, if we find black mold in an apartment complex, the tenant calls and says, hey, I have mold, we are now directed per this policy to contact all neighboring tenants, make them aware of what it is, hopefully do an inspection of their apartment so that they don't have the same type of danger to themselves, notify the landlord or the property owner, make sure that it's being capable, taking care of it in a reasonable amount of time. This is open-ended, so it can be, it does say other, so things like, say they have pet waste or just filth in general that could affect the neighbors, then the code enforcement officer is gonna make that determination, contact the neighboring tenants, let them know of the violation, work with the property owner and the landlord to correct the violation, and get everybody back into their homes comfortable and happy. We did bring this to the, um, what is it called? The Community Development on January thirteenth of this year, and they did recommend the passage of this policy.
And just real quickly to clarify, this is very narrowly tailored to that scenario where essentially someone calls and complains and says, hey, can you come look at this? Or the property owner calls and says, I have a tenant that is doing something poor, it could happen either way, and it does, Amanda goes on, on both types, um, and finds a condition that um is listed in the Health and Safety Code or is related to it in some fashion that we would expand that. This is not um, uh, creating a program where we're inspecting all of these apartments on, it's not a nuisance ordinance, and we're not inspecting all these apartments um on a annual basis, although I would say we discussed at the committee level that that is a, a vehicle, an instrument to help support um safe housing environments um for folks, because multi-unit housing um is an opportunity for a business to take advantage of those that, you know, are at their, you know, worst, they're the lowest income, you know, oldest age, have more access functional needs, challenges than others in, in many ways, so we will explore that um in the future under the um housing component of the Economic and Community Development Committee with the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Fernandez, but for now, this is just narrowly tailored to that circumstance where we are there for some type of call and have to, you know, identify those things amongst other apartments, so we're not tomorrow going to, you know, um, inspect every apartment in the city.
Okay, thank you, um, so, uh, before I go to the council, I just want to point out, this is a new state law with which we must comply, and this is not a discretionary action on our part.
Correct, the state law mandates that we adopt a policy, it does leave the policy open to some degree to the council, um, but it does mandate that we adopt a policy concerning this.
So as I would like to go to the, the committee members who heard this, if you have any, anything to add or comments?
Um, this seems like it's been tailored for our community, and it seems sensible, and um, as you, as you said, it, it works both ways if, if a landlord has a problem with a tenant or a tenant has a problem with a landlord not taking care of the problem, the key thing is public safety, and I support it.
Absolutely, one thing that I hear from landlords is that, you know, renters have so many rights, and um I think this protects both landlords and renters, um, which I'm fond of, there are six housing units in the city that this will cover as well as Airbnbs, so short-term rentals, um, yeah, seems pretty straightforward and totally support it.
And you partially answered my question, which was that Airbnbs are included, would an ADU attached to a house be included?
The Airbnbs won't be included in this stage, this only pertains to multi-unit housing as defined under the law, and so, um, we're, the chief and I were just talking about this, so generally speaking, this would be more than uh three units, so, you know, a duplex or a duet is really a single-family home attached to another single-family home, and triplex is generally the same kind of thing, it's just three of them attached, once you get to four or more, that's really a, you know, a multifamily housing environment, although we could find circumstances that um are different, so it won't apply to Airbnbs now, but we would anticipate that to come into the revision because it's a similar opportunity for someone to take advantage of someone in that kind of housing environment. And then the second part of your question was, I'm sorry.
Is an attached ADU?
It, it is not, so an ADU is an accessory dwelling unit, by definition is accessory to the principal single-family residence, and a JDU which is inside of that would similarly be the same, so you could have a, an, a house with an internal JDU and an attached ADU, three units, it still wouldn't be, fall into this.
Okay, thank you.
So, but build ADUs, we need more house units.
Any other questions? Um, let's go to public comment, any public comment? Seeing none, close to public comment, um, looking for a motion and a second.
I move that we adopt the resolution.
I'll second it.
Uh, motion by Councilmember Fernandez, second by Councilmember Fleming, roll call please.
Councilmember Cece?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Oh, it was galloping down.
Thanks chief.
Thank you chief.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to reports and future agenda items, as always, we start with our esteemed city manager.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, this is, might be, it's not gonna be a record, but it's gonna be close, um, so.
Seven thirty.
But lots of opportunity for the community to engage this council and our committees and commissions, um, coming up on a variety of topics, um, and some others as well, um, on the twenty-ninth here at five thirty, uh, city-county joint courthouse reuse, second public workshop will be held, um, the mayor and Councilmember Fleming have been participating on the steering committee, um, with the consultant group, um, we'll hear back from that consultant group, um, as well as the feedback from the first meeting, um, there on the twenty-ninth, on February fourth, Community Services Committee, which is the mayor and Councilmember Fleming, again, will be looking at parks, technology, climate, and both the courthouse reuse and the new courthouse location a, as they pertain to our goals and our strategic plan. February fifth is our Public Arts Commission, um, they have a couple cool projects coming from uh variable land trust and some others that will be offsite, but go through there and then eventually hit the um council agenda, um, and so people should, people came out tonight, which was wonderful, people should continue to come out for meetings.
Yes.
Art is an easy entry into local government now that we have a Public Arts Commission, so, um, if you, if you are fearful, join the, come to the Public Arts Commission and see that it's not dangerous, it's not harmful, and then you can come to more.
It might be more interesting than some of our other.
Uh, yeah, sometimes, uh, February sixth, as Stuart Baker from the chamber noted, is the Nevada City Smartphone Walking Tour kickoff, um, down in Robinson Plaza, February tenth, our Economic Development, um, Economic and Community Development Committee, the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Fernandez at Glutton for Punishment, as always, have called us another special meeting, um, to, uh, look at, they, they conducted a workshop last, late last year on the short-term rental ordinance, um, we'll be bringing back a draft outline of a revision of that ordinance, if folks don't remember, that's a voter initiative, so it's got some complexity to what we can do, but it needs to be addressed because of its tremendous impact on our housing, so come out and talk to us about that, and then February twelfth is our next council meeting where all of those things will be on the agenda again, as well as our Community Wildfire Protection Plan, um, probably the only city of three thousand in California to have our own, uh, thank you to, uh, the Fire Safety Advisory Committee and the community for coming out yesterday for an item on that, and if you really like council meetings, the audit's gonna be on that agenda, so, come for the CWPP, stay for the audit.
Stay for the audit, I love that.
That is all I have this evening, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question for you, uh, having heard someone suggest today that we hide our work by not making our meetings visible and public, and that our committee meetings are impossible to locate and find, if someone were really interested in attending a very variety of committee meetings, how would they find that information?
So we do post all the agendas in the box outside, um, that's the, you know, the traditional old-school method, still works, works really well, come to City Hall, see the agenda out there, our website has all of those, everything is in the Agenda Center, so every single committee, commission, going back in time, um, is listed on there, you can find it, the bottom of our webpage has a calendar, every meeting is linked and date listed on there, and links to the agenda as well, so once we post the agenda, you can click on it, find it there, if you don't like our Agenda Center but you like our calendar, either one will work for you, um, and then as many community members do, um, don't call council, you can always call council member, but call me, I'm happy to share with you where that is, or we can get you a copy of a packet, you can review it on an iPad here at City Hall, um, lots of ways to do that.
Thank you very much.
Nice.
So there's multiple entry points to this, and opportunities to attend our committee meetings, thank you.
And public comment is always the same email address for every meeting, so.
Appreciate that.
Put the public comments in.
All right, council members.
I'll also add that it has been available on social media too in the link tree, but it looks like that link needs to be updated, so I'm gonna connect with whoever's working on that to make sure you have that login info. I'm super excited about the meeting on February tenth for the draft short-term rental ordinance, I've been talking, um, uh, much with some community members and our city manager, I'm excited to get moving on that as a piece, uh, a, a mere piece of our housing initiatives, and um, that's really what I have.
Thank you.
I'm gonna let you cover the courthouse, because you, you were very good on that.
The Fire Safety Advisory Committee met, and um, things are chugging along, we are really progressing in uh finalizing the CWPP, which will be the guiding spirit behind all the things we hope to accomplish in the next couple of years.
Nice, that's huge, that's really huge.
It's a beautiful plan. Thank you Evan.
Great public turnout for the workshop for that.
Yeah.
That's what I heard.
The choir came and we sang to them.
Wow, oh god.
It's true.
Wait, you weren't preaching?
Well, we preached.
Do you have any history in preaching?
Do you think?
Yeah. Come to City Hall, look at our beautiful art, uh, the meeting on the twelfth sounds a, a real nail-biter, can't wait.
It will be not done at seven thirty like this meeting.
Uh-huh, I got friends coming to town, I say, hey, come to my meeting.
So, thank you, uh, so, a couple things, yes, the, the CWPP meeting was, was very well-attended, very well-run, um, uh, thank you for that, I did have to keep things moving tonight because my beloved wife is in the, in the audience, and I couldn't.
Thank you for joining us.
I couldn't keep her waiting, uh, too long, uh, but.
You are now.
A brief touch on the courthouse meeting, uh, we, we are the highest best use of the courthouse meeting, it's an extremely complex and delicate topic that's going to, I hope, ignite a conversation in our community about what housing really means to us, uh, because, you know, it's clear we have yet to reach a consensus on what that means, uh, and this is an amazing opportunity, we've worked through it, the committee is very good, this will be our second public meeting, um, there've been a lot of internal technical discussions, a lot of work, um, and I'm not gonna preview it too much, uh, but to say that I think where we landed on a place that, you know, it, you know, I, I really dislike the old rubric that you know you got it right in government when no one is happy, um, but I think, uh, some people will be happy and some will not about one part of it and one part of it, and, and back and forth, but I think where we've gotten to is, is probably the right place we need to be, and it sets us up for negotiation with the JCC, which is really where we need to be, so a lot of good work, thank you all for your commitment to all these damn meetings, uh.
Well, and if people want to opine on the courthouse reuse, we, they should attend a meeting on the twenty-ninth here in this room, uh, from five thirty to seven thirty, right Gary?
That's exactly right, and you will hear the whole thing, and we will run a, a good tight meeting.
Yes.
Um, and the folks who are working on it are really very, very good.
Very sharp.
It's, it's, so, if you're really interested, you can learn a lot, so thanks for that, I will.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Again, I just want to thank all of us as a council for the commitment to the strategic planning part, it's definitely in our meetings, it's a lot of work, but you know, if we, we look at what we've done and what we need to do, it's great, I'm on with the county tomorrow for ten minutes at somewhere around three thirty, if you want to stream me, so, okay,